Okay, we ready? I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Woodford County Finance Corporation. We have one item on our agenda. Approve the minutes of the March 2020 School District Finance Corporation meeting. You have a motion. Mr. Wilson, have a second. Ms. Springgate?
Bradley.
Ms. Bradley, any questions? All right, I'm going to call her all. Ms. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Richardson?
Present.
No, you say aye. We're voting on it for the minute for the finance corp. Okay, Ms. Springgate?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I move with your.
Have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Wilson in a second?
Second.
Ms. Bradley, any discussion? All right, we'll go around and vote. Ms. Bradley? You moved to?
Aye.
Ms. Richardson?
Aye.
Ms. Springgate?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. There are some lags, it seems, tonight, so I guess we'll just kind of pause and wait for each other and just get through it, so. So are we also going to have members of the public on the screen that aren't participating in the meeting?
The grid view is going to have everybody that's in this feed on there up to probably around 16. So you could set the parameters on asking people to mute, asking people to take their, you know, just take the video off, you know, that kind of stuff. That way, the only ones that are up are the board members.
Okay, okay. We can do that when we start the meeting then.
Yeah.
So it's six o'clock.
We've got 28 on Facebook, too.
Yeah.
I have six o'clock, does everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm going to call to meeting, or call to order the special board planning meeting via teleconference. Have a roll call. Ms. Bradley?
Present.
Ms. Richardson? She's not back.
Present.
Present.
Ms. Springgate?
Present.
Mr. Wilson?
Present.
Okay, before we start, I would ask that anybody who is not addressing the board or is on the board, or, you know, of course, Mr. Hopkins as well should be on the screen, would mute their video, mute their audio, and take down their video. You can still hear and see us, but that way it'll be clear on the screen, the board members and the people addressing the board. So I'll make that request. I have one more request. We're going to try to do this so it makes sense and everybody can, we can have some order to it. So I think what will happen is, you know, as each agenda item is presented, I'm going to kind of go around the horn and let everybody ask questions, and then go back around and get follow-up questions, just one at a time. I ask that we don't, try not to be repetitive, and, you know, some of the items we're voting on tonight, we definitely need to discuss and make our opinions known. Some of them, we won't vote until next week, so we can kind of make our opinions known then. So with that being said, we will go next to item on the agenda, which is the instructional update. Is Ryan here?
Yes, I am. Yes.
Okay, okay. So he doesn't have his own little?
No, we're just sliding in.
Okay.
Am I okay here on this camera?
Mm-hmm.
All right. All right, well, good evening. Thank you. First off, for instruction, obviously, we are in non-traditional instruction still. By my count, we're entering our fifth week of that. This is days 20 through 23 going on this week. And what we've been doing is following a phase plan. I don't know how familiar you are with that, but within the first phase there before spring break, it was modeled after the guideline, the NTI guidelines that we had in place for how we used those before for weather, snow days. But what we found is, that was a good framework, but we had to adjust coming back after spring break, just due to the amount of, it wasn't built for that, for, to use over an extended period of time. So we had to make some adjustments. So coming back after spring break, we called that Phase Two, and at that point, it was more about increasing the use of technology. We got more devices out to students at all levels, elementary, middle, and high, and more use of virtual teaching through hangouts like we're doing here, or through video lessons, or just other resources, tech resources. And also decreasing the number of assignments that were expected, as well as the number of days. So I think the idea to reduce to four days of NTI was well-received by everybody, whether it be students, parents, staff. Mr. Alby there shaking his head, yes, you agree, yes. I think that was a good idea and a well-deserved break in the middle of the week, and just kind of chunked the work there for everybody. And then what has also changed within Phase Two is how we document participation. It's more about the interaction and communication that teachers are having. And the way I did a video for the elementaries, it's more about the interaction, so two-way, so, meaning that if it's pushed out through a technology platform, obviously, the student can submit that assignment or questions, whether it be through Schoology, Google Classroom, obviously, hangouts like this is a way to get the interaction. And if all else fails, then just phone call to follow up with students and their parents to keep them engaged. So we had to adjust, again, that traditional NTI, the way we had it, just wasn't built for this longevity, and so we made a lot of changes thus far. What we need to think about next is Phase Three, meaning how we close out our year with this, as you've probably heard, that we're going to be ending the year through NTI. So we need to look at what it looks like after May 1st, what would be Monday, May 3rd, what it looks like in Phase Three to close out the year. So that was it in terms of instruction and how we're handling NTI. Any particular questions or comments for me?
Ryan, is there any way to gauge participation in NTI?
There is, and we're still working on those numbers. As I said, that changed once we got back from break, and yes, at the school level, they are keeping percentages of that interaction that I mentioned, and so we have, we've changed the reporting of what that looks like, and we do have to submit that to the state. Mr. Gibson coordinates all that for us, and we're still working on getting those numbers in.
Is there a threshold that we have to meet for it to count?
Not, is there a previous? There hasn't been previously, no, nothing updated or given thus far.
This is Sherry.
Hi, Sherry.
I just wanted to say that I am just so proud of how the district has been able to really handle and move into these really just tumultuous times with really solid planning. I think that the resources were there, and that we were already doing a lot of the things that were really necessary. We had a lot of infrastructure in place, and I really just want to praise you and really all the staff and the teachers and parents, and I appreciate your flexibility in being able to go back and look at things and make adjustments as needed. I just think that's so wonderful and really telling about what an excellent district we have here in Woodford County, so thank you.
Well, we greatly appreciate that. And yeah, you said the word flexibility, and I think I've used that word more in the past several weeks than ever. The good thing about it was, is, and I also said the word framework several times, is that we did have the framework and the infrastructure to just get the ball rolling right away, but then be flexible after that, to see, okay, like as I mentioned, it's not built for this, how can we approve upon this and make the best of this situation that we can? But thank you overall. Okay, Ms. Eelen, would you let me just move into the equity update, then?
Yes.
Okay.
If nobody else has any comments, yes, please.
Okay, so much like a lot of the work that we're doing, this has been tabled just a little bit, but we do continue to plan to meet with the equity team this week virtually, so we're not really that far off schedule. We did, we got our March meeting in before all of this, the shutdown happened, so our April meeting is scheduled for this week. Dr. Banks will be joining us. The one thing that I've talked to you, actually, for a couple of months now, is the process of the cultural intelligence assessment, if you remember talking about that, and then the follow, what follows is what's called an interpretation workshop. So when we last planned this, we, obviously, we're going to do all this, not all of it. The assessment part is online, so regardless of what situation we're in, that's how that was going to be handled. But the interpretation workshop, when we, before this happened, we talked about doing three separate workshops, so that we could divide the board members up among those three sessions and avoid it being a special-called meeting. But now we're in the situation where we can do that, and I've talked with Dr. Banks, and obviously, as many companies and entities are, they're going virtual as well. So we do have that capability, meaning that we could take the assessment, we could have a week-long window, and then the very next week is scheduled three different sessions. They would be something like this. I haven't talked through the specifics with her just yet, but that is one option. Ms. Eelen, I know you want to talk about maybe waiting just a bit to see if this could be more in-person, face-to-face, but as we all know, that's just an undetermined timeline right now. So I guess my question is, should we move forward with a virtual-type interpretation workshop to follow, or do, or maybe consider waiting?
Well, I'll just tell the board here, talk to me a little bit about this. You know, obviously, ideally, in-person would be best, but my thought, and I'm really open to what Ryan and Scott think about this and Ms. Banks, is, you know, could we wait to June and see if there is a possibility that we could do it in-person, see what the circumstances are with the virus? I really don't want to put it off to fall, because I think fall is, for one thing, going to be extremely busy for our staff, and as much of business we can get done before school starts up again. And also, I don't want to, it's a sort of important initiative for us, this equity audit, to, you know, keep putting it off. But again, so we have to weigh that against the value of having something in-person, something this dynamic that you really do want, kind of want to be in a room with people when you discuss these issues?
Sure.
Against having to delay, so, which is not good. So that was kind of my thought, was just to wait till June, to see if it would be possible to try to schedule something in-person. But as Ryan said, we can go ahead and do the assessment, because otherwise, it could be online anyway. So any thoughts of board members that we should share right now?
Respectfully, Debbie, I don't know if we should postpone things. I think probably need to move forward and adapt to electronic meetings, not knowing when the end is going to be, and with the importance of the equity audit and the work that that team is doing, I would be in favor of moving forward.
The one, if I may just interject, the one?
Ryan, please, we're really relying on the recommendation here, so.
Sure. The one thing that Dr. Banks did recommend is not to have a lapse from when you take the assessment to when, you know, so it's fresh on your mind, she said you're going to get the results instantaneously, individually, and then you're kind of left with, well, what does this mean? So you, we want to, we want to have those back-to-back, so to speak, within two weeks, so that we can interpret the results of that, both individually and collectively, and in order to get your baseline. Ms. Springgate, were you going to say something?
Yes, I'm just going to say, I do think that the equity work is foundational, and that it's something that's going to really be incorporated in really all aspects of, you know, our culture and how we're doing things. So I do agree that it's just extremely important and it's foundational, but I absolutely just trust that you and Ms. Banks can kind of work out what's the best way to do that and what the timeframes are. I'm absolutely fine with waiting until, you know, Debbie's suggestion, waiting kind of until June. It feels like you're going ahead and working and having the individual meetings, and you're scheduled to have one, and it's April now. So I don't feel like, you know, there's a, that we're losing time here. I feel like that you all will be able to kind of work that out scheduling-wise, and I think we should just, you know, like Debbie said, kind of just go with your recommendation as far as when that should happen and the best way to do it, so.
The only thing that I would caution, if we were to wait into June, is teachers. While we still have them on the clock, so to speak, of doing that within this May window, if we get into June, and we could still, maybe at the beginning of June, but beyond that, maybe folks will be vacationing, who knows? But if they are able to get out, then they're going to want that, and I think it'd be harder to coordinate folks as we get into the, deeper into summer. And then also, just trying to stay on track with the work that we have planned, because ultimately, what this does is this sets the foundation and the baseline, and then we get into the fall, and we start doing our module training with all of our staff. So if we push this back, that pushes that back, and regardless, the beginning of this, of next school year, there's going to be a lot to it. So I don't want to push back too much with everything else that we'll have to adapt and be ready for to start the 2021 year. Mr. Hopkins, any thoughts?
Now, I guess, let me just be clear, so let's say that we were not, I think it was the end of April, when we, when we first started talking about this before the COVID-19 entered the picture, that it was going to be the end of April that we would have had these meetings.
Correct. Oh, sorry.
And so, and so if I understand, and, you know, I was thinking like Sherry, you know, kind of said that it wouldn't hurt to move it to June, or at least to wait till June, but now I'm hearing, maybe you don't think that's that great of an idea. That's not really how you're leaning. Is that right?
It's not, just for, I guess, for schedules, so to speak. Because what we're going to do, we're going to finish our school year somewhere within the, what, May 11th week, still TBD, and then we do have some teacher workdays to follow. So those teachers that are on, that will be part of this, will still have some workdays to be able to participate virtually. Again, I fear that if we get into June, and deep into June, it just would be harder to coordinate schedules of everybody involved.
Well, and like I started out, it's just, again, it's like most things in life, there's pros and cons to both sides of this, so.
There are.
It's just, why are you going to come down on it? If you recommend that we try to do it virtually, I'm okay with that. I don't know. Yeah, there's just no win. I mean, what's wrong with it?
I definitely, I definitely hear your point, though, of this topic would be best face-to-face discussion. I definitely hear what you're saying there, but again, I just fear that if we push this back, then we're just going to continue to push it on down the line. What we really need to, what I'm really looking forward to, planning forward to, are those, the module implementation that are planned at this point to go over the whole course of the 2021 school year.
Okay. I'm going to leave it. I mean, I think everybody understands the pros and cons. Does anyone else have any questions or thoughts or really hard feelings? I'm going to leave it to your judgment, Ryan.
Okay.
I think, again, we all understand the pros and cons, and.
I think the.
Just about doing those two things.
I think one of the things to consider, too, on waiting, is that we would have to be, at least to Phase Two of the, kind of the reopening, to get to the size gathering that would be allowable. And I don't know that we have any real sense of when Phase Two may get here. And so I think that's the other dilemma that you're looking at. I mean, I think if we knew it was going to be around the 1st of June, then I think you could probably make a different decision. But I think, given that that is really still up in the air, I think that's why it's maybe best to go ahead, let's get it done, so that we can begin to move forward.
Okay. Anybody else? Sherry, are you? Do you have anything else, Sherry? Sounds like they're, you know, they're really leaning to going ahead and doing it virtually, more on schedule, and again, I'm fine with that. It's good and bad on both sides, and you just have to choose, which.
Yeah, I trust their judgment. I mean, I feel like they probably know the scheduling and the what needs to be done after this foundational piece is in place, so I totally trust that, I'm fine. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments on this?
No, thank you, Ryan, for all of your work on this. It's definitely an important, impressive issue, I'm glad.
We're not, we're not letting it stall out. And so, Ryan, you're going to be, are you have, you know, I know that the, is the survey up now?
No, the assessment?
Okay, yeah.
No. What, so timeline, then, what I would be looking at is, and yes, you said we're scheduled to do this, and actually, right now, like in this time period, what I'm looking at is likely doing the assessment the week of May 11th. So the assessment will be open all week, you take that independently at home, it's just a link, and then the following week, we would schedule three sessions. And I need to talk with her how she wants to organize that, now that we are doing it virtual, with, if you would have certain schools together or principals together, how she wants to coordinate those three sessions. But obviously, you would have three options, and then just would need to divvy yourselves up amongst those three.
And sometime before May 11th, you'll be sending us all the instructions to get on the assessment tool online and fill it out, so.
Yeah. I told Dr. Banks we'd be, we were discussing this tonight, so I intend to follow up with her tomorrow to lock dates in.
Thanks.
So I should be able to give you dates by the end of this week, certainly, and then with more specifics to come on the assessment piece, as well as the workshop.
Okay. Good job, Ryan, thank you. Is there any, is there anything? I am, I echo again, I'm happy that we're, you know, we're having so many delays and things we want to do, but this is good that we're going to continue pushing through this, so that's good.
Okay.
Anybody else? Question? Did you have anything else, Ryan?
No, ma'am, that was it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Going to move into our regular agenda, oh, we have four items. Mr. Hopkins, do you want to take us through those, please?
Sure. Item A is the resolution to implement provisions of Senate Bill 177 relating to the delivery of personnel notices. Typically, any kind of personnel notice in our school district is done via hand-delivery. That is not advisable at this point in time, and so Senate Bill 177 allows school districts to do that via email or mail, and we are actually adding one more thing to that, adding a certified mail component to it as well. So this would allow us to implement Senate Bill 177 with our personnel notices.
Madam Chairperson, I move we approve superintendent's recommendation.
You're still muted.
Sorry, I'm sorry. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Wilson and a second by Ms. Bradley. Is there any discussion? All right, we'll go around. Ms. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Richardson?
Aye.
Ms. Springgate?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion passes 5-0. Item B?
Last month, we asked for you to cancel all out-of-state travel through the end of April. We're coming back this month and asking that we cancel all out-of-state travel through May 31st through the end of May.
Madam Chairman, so move.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Wilson and a second by Ms. Springgate. Is there any discussion? Okay, Ms. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Richardson?
Aye.
Ms. Springgate?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Item C?
All right, this is to ask for some amendments to our current certified evaluation plan, and this basically allows our principals to complete their summative evaluations with staff based on what had been done up to the point that we were, that we had to close school. And this language, Martha worked with Garrett and Grant on this, and so we are asking for your approval of those amendments.
Madam Chairperson, so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Wilson and a second by Ms. Springgate. Is there any discussion? All right, Ms. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Richardson?
Aye.
Ms. Springgate?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion passes 5-0. All right, the next item is an update from the architect on where he is, what his views are, and I'm going to have Ms. Bradley kind of help me with this, but first we'll hear from Mr. Locke. Are you there, Mr. Locke?
We are.
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, we can't see you.
Debbie.
Okay.
What?
We missed an item.
Oh, we did?
No.
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 No, we didn't. We did item D. We're up to D, okay? Kevin, we cannot see you, but we can hear you.
Okay.
We see the bookshelf, I believe.
Yeah, you're looking at my bookshelf. That's the back of my camera, I'm sorry. I'm trying to fix that real quick. Well, if I could just go ahead and talk, I'm not used to Google meets as much as some of the other platforms that we've been using lately, so if you don't mind me just doing this verbally, I'll turn my camera off, so you don't have to look at my bookshelf.
I kind of wanted you to come tonight, there's a lot of things on the agenda surrounding the high school project, and I don't expect an extensive update from you, but kind of an opportunity for some members to ask questions and just kind of give us an idea of where you are and how this whole COVID thing, if it has affected anything, just so we can hear from you this month.
Sure, so one of the things that we've approached the end of design development, and remember, there's kind of three phases to the design, the schematic design, the design development, and then the construction document phases. We're approaching the end of the design development phase on the project, and we feel like at this point in time, we need some direction as to whether we're going to proceed down a certain path, and a discussion of what alternates we should be looking at for going into construction documentation. So I sent an email back at the end of March that basically took one of the ideas that came from the community forums beginning of March related to doing a 10-12 high school as opposed to a 9-12 high school, and I think that when it was brought up in the community forum, it was thinking about actually splitting, keeping the ninth grade in the high school and 10-12. So kind of a hybrid option there would be for us to take a look at doing a 10-12 for 1,000 students for Woodford County High School for standard classroom spaces and science spaces, but build all of it. but build all the core spaces, the PE, art, music, things like that, administration cafeteria, auditorium, all those things. Build those for 1,350. And what this does is it gives you about a $10 million flexibility as far as what you will have from an option standpoint on bid day. And so that was kind of the impetus for this option that we were referring to as option number two. Option number one was basically going down the path that we were proceeding with, with the full buildout of the high school as it was. Option three was the look at the project, basically doing a renovation project over a longer period of time for the existing high school. So those were the three options that we presented back in March. And really, that option two, I think, was the one that, in my mind, gave the board the most flexibility as far as, you know, from a financial standpoint. Any questions before I move forward?
Go ahead.
Okay. So the other thing is, as far as an update on the project itself, like I said, we're getting finished with design development drawings. We do need some direction before we go into construction documents. As far as the geotech, that survey has been done on the existing site. All the borings have been dug. They've done a preliminary report. We're facing some very shallow rock in that area, but they have not found any karst activity that indicates any sinkholes. Of course, all of this is, you know, something that you won't know for sure until you start excavating the site. As far as the COVID-19 and what the effects are from that at this point in time, I would invite Dave West or Clay from Trace Creek to chime in as well. But what we have been seeing just right now has been, and just some smaller projects that have been, we've been seeing a lot more participation by subcontractors. So normally, here we will get five or six subcontractors. We're seeing a lot more. So the general thinking is that we may be proceeding, unfortunately, into a path similar or maybe possibly even worse than the 2008, 2009 recession. And what that did from a pricing standpoint is obviously the cost per square foot dropped fairly dramatically during that time period. The other thing that you're potentially looking at is kind of to temper that is the idea that there may be some delivery problems or actually manufacturers not being able to provide equipment on a timely basis, especially equipment, HVAC equipment, things like that, that are coming from overseas. So that may be impacted by this. And then I would go ahead and ask Dave with Trace Creek if he has any more information.
Hi, Dave.
How are you? Can you see me?
Yes.
What Kevin's saying is exactly right. It's, you know, it's all an estimate right now, but we've already started seeing more participation on projects, even smaller projects having 11 or 12 bidders on. God forbid that it works in 2008. But my forecast is as bad, if not worse than 2008. Contractors already starting to prepare for it.
Are there any question? Oh, there's Kevin.
Yeah. I figured it out. Thanks.
I guess I would ask, Kevin, in light of everything that's going on, is this a place that we could pause and wait a little bit to see what happens and see where we're at as a community, as a country? And let things unfold?
Absolutely. Yeah, this would, if you're going to pause the project for a period of time to see where things kind of shake out, this is a good time to do that if you're going to do it. I will say that we need to kind of think about the duration of that pause and how that would affect the start of construction potentially. Because obviously, you don't want to be started construction in January, February timeframe. But, you know, that's something that we could discuss. So, yeah, I mean, this is unprecedented. And we certainly, you know, don't want to encourage the project going on a permanent hold. But as far as what's going on right now, we don't see any issues with a temporary halt to the project.
Dave, did you want to weigh in on that at all?
Well, I mean, I agree. I'm for doing whatever's best for the district, you know, for the school system. If the project would pause, though, I would ask if there's any way possible that we could be, you know, provide some parameters for that. Because I have superintendent that's actually, I'm just kind of floating from job to job, expecting things to start at a certain time. Same with project manager. I have to assign these gentlemen to projects if this project's going to be put on hold for. So, you know, that's just, you know, if that's possible.
This is Sheri. I just want to say that I appreciate all the information. And I do think it's really important that we, you know, place this in context of where we are right now with the pandemic and, you know, how that's affecting really our nation, state, and local finances. So I appreciate all the information. Thank you.
I guess one of the things that we did not discuss is, you know, with the option number two, there is the issue of redistricting and moving. You know, that's another topic of discussion that can be postponed to a later date. But at some point in time, that option two would require us to have that discussion about that. And there would be time to do that. But that is kind of the impetus for option number two and its viability.
Well, and I do appreciate, you know, you were at the forum that you opened and you heard an idea and you thought, how can I develop that? So that's what we were trying to get out of that. So I do appreciate that. We have so many people on the screen. I just want to remind all board members, they need to make sure their picture is up on the screen. And if anybody could go to Facebook Live, that would be great, too. But I know we're all kind of finding our way through this, but we need to make sure that all board members are on the screen. That's part of the requirement. And so make sure you keep your picture up then. And people will find us around all this array of people.
And if other participants could turn their video off, if everybody could take a second and make sure your video's off, that'd be great.
Yes, yes. Okay. Anything else for Kevin? Kevin, thank you again for coming. We'll be keeping in touch with you. David, you didn't have to make the drive. So there's still reliance to all these things. But thank you both.
This is the one.
I'm sorry, we have another question?
No, I just wanted to remind you that I also asked for Mr. Locke's 42 email request to be placed on. It's on the agenda later. So I don't know if Mr. Locke wants to be present for that.
Yeah, Kevin, can you kind of just hang with us here until we get to that?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. The next thing on the agenda is we're going to our regular agenda for next week, I believe. Mr. Hawkins, again, I'm going to ask you to take us through this. If there are items that other members have brought up, then we can talk about them at that time. But if you'll go ahead and lead us through this, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Amy probably won't read through the financial summary this month, but you all have that. So if you do have any questions, feel free to let us know about that. But that's been provided to you. But there's, we felt like that there would not be a need just to read through that, if that would be okay. The, if we'll look at the consent agenda for this month, you'll see that we have just a couple of donations. One was for a scholarship fund that we manage here at the school district. And then also some hygiene products from Cardinal Office.
Mr. Hawkins, I was wondering, can you tell us what that scholarship is? Like, how is it awarded?
That's the scholarship that was in honor of, in memory of Betty Luckett and her husband. We don't control who is selected, that the family does that. We just manage the fund. We just house the funds. So all of the donations comes to us. We do have a couple of fundraisers, and those are for next year, next school year, the 2021 school year. We also have a couple of contracts. We may have a third one. Bob has a conference call with Chinewas a little bit later this week on the copier contract. And so if we get that finalized, that will be included next week. But the other two, one is an MOA with Campbellsville University. They are creating a Master of Arts in School Improvement Program. And we're actually going to partner with them so that courses can be offered here. Some of our folks will be helping as far as being instructors. But Martha has been working with Campbellsville on doing that. Again, we just felt like that was a good opportunity for our own staff to be able, if they were interested in pursuing a master's degree, to be able to do that, most of it being here within our school district. And then the other one is, it's an Adidas contract. And it's very similar to the one that we've, it's just getting ready to expire. And that's what we utilize for equipment and uniforms and things like that for our middle school and high school teams.
On the Campbellsville contract, so how exactly does that work? I was reading it. Is there a cost to us? Are we, or is this just another way they're going to provide dual credit? And our teachers are going to teach them, or?
It's not a dual credit. This is for, this is a master's program for our staff. So any staff member, and Martha, chime in here. But it's, we would teach the courses here. And actually, some of our folks would be instructors along with Campbellsville University professors. So again, it's just an opportunity for our staff if they wanted to, if they were interested in a master's program, to be able to do that through Campbellsville and take a lot of classes without having to travel.
They terminated Grow Your Own program this evening to where we can tailor-made their courses. So we would work with their professors and base it on what our needs are in Woodford County. And specifically for teachers who want to grow in the career, but not necessarily want to get a degree in administration. So this is a way they could get a master's and teach our leadership and be a leader in their building without going into administration. So we would just partner with Campbellsville to have those master-level courses, as Mr. Hawkins said, on our campus.
And is there any cost to us?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
It would just mean that our, the building we applied to have a meeting is our middle school. There is no cost to us. We just have to have it on record for tax accreditation.
Oh, okay.
This is America. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, let me just finish one question quickly, Sheri. Mr. Chinewas has reviewed this. Did he have any questions, any additions, any concerns? Has he reviewed this?
I don't know that we've asked him to review this when it's simply in agreement with the university.
Okay. Sheri, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to say it sounds like a really wonderful and innovative opportunity for our teachers and staff. And I really appreciate that the administration and Martha, that you guys are always kind of looking for ways that we can do extra things or different things or out-of-the-box things that really helps our teachers and, you know, really our students in the end. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that? Item D is our certified evaluation plan for 2021. And we have convened our 50-50 committee. The only changes are based on the administrator standards for next year. And so we would ask for your approval on that. And then the item E is we received a third offer of assistance from CATS. So any other questions on the consent agenda? All right. For the regular agenda, item A is the notifications of personnel matters. And that's everything that's occurred since our March board meeting. Item B is the notification of payment of bills. Item C is the approval of minutes for March 10th, March 16th, March 23rd, and March 30th board meetings. And everyone was in attendance, so we can do that as one motion. Item D is to rescind the BG-1 for the new Woodford County High School. That's BG 19353.
I did have something that I wanted to say about this and the next two items. Should I wait until he reads all of them, Debbie?
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm just going to leave myself on. Scott, did you have anything that you wanted to go into on this agenda item?
Not specifically tonight. I'll have more next week, but certainly.
We're voting next week, so any information that you can give us on this, you know, this is the planning meeting where we would discuss it. The information you could give us and.
Right.
Next week.
Well, like I said, I'll provide more next week. But this is, Amy and I both shared some information, I think, with you at our March 10th work session, where we believe that this would be necessary in order for us to be able to unrestrict the $600,000 from the FY '19 in order to be able to utilize a capital funds request. So those funds cannot be accessed without rescinding the BG-1.
I hope that this item be placed on the agenda and then the ones that go along with it. I just, I feel like it's vitally important for the board to have open discussions around these agenda items so that our community can fully understand our plan moving forward. And to begin, I would just like to share four points related to these agenda items. First, the restriction of funds has led to deficit spending. We had nearly a million-dollar deficit last year and anticipate having a similar deficit this year. And based on our January budget meeting, the deficit is projected to be even larger next year. Second, given the fact that our expenses are exceeding our revenues, one-time money is now being used to balance the budget. This practice cannot continue. Our superintendent and finance officer have recommended unrestricting the $950,000 of general fund to eliminate this deficit and put us back on good financial standing. Third, at the forum last month, board members, myself included, stated that it was the board's intent to balance the budget given that three board seats will be on the ballot in November. If the unrestriction of funds is not selected as our path forward, I would like for us to discuss what the board's plan will be to fulfill the commitment we made to the public at the forum to balance the budget. And finally, with the current COVID pandemic and the negative impact that is already having on our nation and state and local economies, I think it just makes sense that we have all available funds that are needed to do our general day-to-day operations available so that we can maintain our current programs and staff. We just cannot continue to take a million dollars out of our general fund year after year after year to put forward and restrict for a new high school in this manner, especially in light of the current financial situation.
Okay. So that was your, where you wanted to comment on D, E, and F. That sounds like. So does anybody have any questions?
If we could get back to the, to the topic that the superintendent brought up. If he's, if, I would suggest that if he is unable or unwilling to share all the information at this meeting, that possibly we, we hold this until the May meeting when he'll have time to share all the information with us.
This is Sheri. I would just object and say that the superintendent and finance officer, month after month after month, have provided the information verbally, also in writing. I don't know what more they could, could share, other than what they've already recommended. And so that's why I ask for these agenda items to be placed on the agenda so that we can go ahead and have a vote.
Okay. Frank, Nate, I'm going to let Mr. Wilson go ahead and finish his and get a response, I believe he wants, from Mr. Hawkins.
He was understanding that when you ask for information, that the superintendent said he did not have all the information this evening. He would have more that he could share with us next week. I believe that's what he said.
Miss, so are you asking Mr. Hawkins if he is going to have more information available next week?
Yeah.
That's what I heard too. So Scott, can you address that?
Sure.
If he, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
Obviously, with, with the rescension of the BG-1, or rescinding of the BG-1, I think a couple of critical things. Number one, it does allow us to access the $600,000 that was restricted in FY-19. I think the other thing that it does, it keeps us from continuing to incur cost as we, as we move forward. As far as the unrestricting the funds, you know, again, I think when you, when you look at the information that we provided in February at the board meeting, and again, at the March 10th work session, it was our belief, Amy and myself both, that in order to eliminate the deficit, this would allow us to get back hold. And I think we, we provided that information to you. What's happened since March 10th, though, is an unprecedented economic situation facing us as a state and a nation and a local community. I think if you look at the fact that the legislature took an unprecedented act in approving a one-year budget compared to a biennial budget that they are required to pass. When you look at statements made by individual legislators, I think we probably saw the statement from Mr. Graves as it relates to what we are facing in, in the, in the next few months to a year. That we had legislatures, legislators saying that this budget is a shot in the dark. KSBA even said that we should not have any expenditures outside what is absolutely necessary and that we should anticipate cuts moving forward. So when you just look at some of those statements, I think it is imperative as a school district that we put ourselves in the best financial position possible as we move forward. When you think about the projected deficit that was discussed in the January budget, that was based on what we thought was going to be an increase in SEEK and maybe an increase in assessments. And I don't know that we can count on any increase in assessments this year. And we already know that SEEK is being held flat. And I think we need to anticipate a mid-year cut. And so while I understand the point earlier about let's put a pause and let's take a short-term break, I think it's going to be January or February before we know what we are facing. And that's when the legislature comes back into session to deal with FY-22. But I think, as David and Kevin both stated earlier, we're looking at a recession that could be far worse than what we saw in 2008, 2009. And as, as the advisor to the board, I, I think it's imperative that we put ourselves in the best financial position possible. And not, not doing so, I think, puts us in grave peril as we move forward.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you very much, Mr. Hawkins. And you want, you will not be presenting any further information next week?
I may have a little bit more specifics on some of those quotes and who said what. But again, I think the, the basis of the message is the same.
Okay, thank you.
Richardson?
The only other thing I would say is that, given what, what we have, are facing right now with the deficit for the current year and what we are facing next year, if we have any extra funds, we need to do something for our staff. They have been phenomenal since the school closure in turning basically upside down what we have traditionally done in this school district. And so if there are any extra dollars, it should go to them. Because I, I think the fact that raises have been removed from the state budget moving forward for FY-21, and I would be shocked if they were included in FY-22. So I did want to make that statement as well.
Mr. Wilson, any other questions?
No, thank you, Madam Chairperson.
Ms. Bradley, you have any questions for Mr. Hawkins? No? Okay, Ms. Richardson, do you have any questions for Mr. Hawkins? On these three, it sounds like we're grouping D, E, and F. Do you have any questions on D, E, or N for Mr. Hawkins?
I would just like to request, is there any information that he sees that he's going to have next week that we have that prior to the board meeting? If we're going to be making a decision on this? I'd like to request that we have at least by the end of the week, not Monday, if that's at all possible. I think that the past has shown that, you know, if we're going to make a decision on this, we need to have the information beforehand, not at the meeting that night. That's why we're having this meeting tonight.
Okay. I, I have a couple of questions. Danny, did you have something?
Go ahead. When you, before COVID, we were told that, and that's when things were looking somewhat positive with the state budget. It looked like there would be a per-student SEEK increase. It looked like there would be some other positive things. Of course, the budget wasn't finalized, but those, those signs were good. And you told us at that point that even when the signs were good, that we were in grave danger if we didn't unrestrict the money. Now, and that we would not have to cut expenses if we unrestricted the money, again, when times were good, but now times are not good. So do you anticipate that even if the board would vote to unrestrict all this money, we're still going to have to have expense cuts? To be consistent with that position then, I think logically it just says, we're going to have to cut expenses on top of unrestricting everything because we are expecting reduced income. Would you agree with that?
I, I wouldn't necessarily say that my position has changed, Danny. We were still facing a million dollar deficit this year. We were still facing a significant, a significant deficit next year. So either we were going to have to cut programs or unrestrict funds to get ourselves in a position for next year. Then when a, then when a pandemic hit, it just put a greater emphasis on needing all necessary dollars to put us in the best position possible. Now, what we will do is that, based on what we believe may be the case next year, we will plan a budget accordingly. And that's what we will bring to you in May. But we are also, as, as part of this, you know, we would, we would, and I think at that point, we can look to see, do we need to unrestrict the capital outlay dollars to be able to give us even more flexibility? Because this only talks about the general fund restriction. This doesn't talk about the capital outlay dollars. And so we've got money there that if needed, we could potentially come back and, and utilize at that point in time. But will we have to be very mindful next year? Absolutely. But what our goal is, but what our goal is, is to plan the budget so that we are anticipating a mid-year cut. And that we're not going to plan for the most money we would receive and then all of a sudden have to make adjustments in December. We want to plan for that upfront. That's what we've done in the past, that's what we'll do again next year.
Well, I'm thinking, and actually, I'm glad that we, we've been somewhat successful in identifying some expenses that would need to be cut. That's always good to do before, and, and you have given us a short list of that. I'm assuming those, those will have to be taken as well. Is, did we have a SEEK adjustment this year? I was going to ask Amy that during the.
I think we.
Hopkins, in March, did we have a SEEK adjustment this year?
I think we got about $150,000 more than we had budgeted.
Okay, so that actually, like, I know last year, the SEEK adjustment was, you know, $350,000 less, which was one, a good part of that million dollar deficit. But this year was actually an increase of $150,000?
A slight, a slight increase.
Okay. And, and then also, can you remind me on the distilleries' tax, what that went up over last year's budget?
It was about $350,000.
Is what we received and we had budgeted for one?
It's $350,000 more than what we budgeted this week.
Is that what you meant, Scott?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any more questions? Let's, you know, and then Mr. Hawkins will give us any more. We can decide on this next week.
Sheri. Oh, I'm sorry, Ambrose, you go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, Sheri.
Sheri, we're going to go back around, you were first, go ahead. I don't understand that.
Boo Boo's barking. This is Sheri. I was just going to say, I think that we just really need to be clear when we say that the, the unrestricting of this million dollars will make our budget whole. There will be no additional cuts necessary to make that budget whole at this time. And then Mr. Hawkins and Amy will have a whole budget without deficit spending of a million dollars that we've set aside for this new high school for the past two years and is in the budget to set aside for next year. What we'll do is we'll unrestrict that, make the budget whole so that that can be used for electric bills, for teacher salaries, for paper, for computers, for Chromebooks, those sorts of things. And so once that's unrestricted, then I assume, Mr. Hawkins, you, you and Amy would go back to the drawing board and let us know budget-wise what's going on. And I, for one, appreciate when you budget conservatively. When you say, the revenue could be this, but if it's more, that'll be good news versus, we think the revenue will be this, and then it comes in $350,000 less, which is bad news and really hard to kind of compensate in a system such as a school system. So I do appreciate that.
Okay. Mr. Wilson, did you have anything else?
I was just going to ask the superintendent if, if he agreed with Ms. Richardson's request. If any new information, he'll be submitting that he do that before the end of the close of business prior to us.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that idea too, Ms. Richardson.
Ms. Bradley, you have anything else?
I have a couple of questions. Actually, I think they are maybe for Ms. Smith. Is it possible for her to answer or no?
She can chime in, she can chime in too, sure. Go ahead.
Okay, so currently, the $600,000 of restricted money is tied to the BG-1, correct?
Correct. The FY, the FY-19 and then the BG-1 is contingent upon, the way it's, it's, it's laid out is contingent upon that recurring $600,000 each year.
Plus the capital outlay.
Correct.
But not including the $350,000 from this year.
Correct, the, the current BG-1.
Correct. So if we unrestricted, actually, I mean, it wouldn't be unrestricting it because it hasn't been taken yet, but the $350,000, we could do that without rescinding the BG-1. But if we do rescind the BG-1, then it will unrestrict all of that $600,000. It'll still stay, stay in that fund, in the building fund, and we'll have to do a, a request to be able to use that. Is that correct?
Yes, the, the rescinding the BG-1, we would have to utilize a capital funds request to be able to access the $600,000 from FY-19.
And that information came from Chee, or?
Is that right, Amy?
I'm sorry, I am having microphone problems. Can you repeat that question, Ms. Bradley?
Yeah, so what I was wondering is, with an assumption of rescinding the BG-1, we still have to do the capital funds request, and it has to be approved because that money has already been moved one time into our building fund.
So if, there's a couple of things. If the BG-1 is rescinded, the, then the $600,000 and the $600,000 resolution is, is also rescinded. Then the only thing that we have tied to the project is the cash on hand from 2019 sitting on that BG-1. The building fund money and the capital outlay fund money would continue to be required to be used through the capital funds process. The current year money, the $2,026,000, if that is rescind, if, if BG-1 is canceled and the resolution is rescinded, I can return that to the general fund this year. I can't last year's, but I can this year's. Does that answer your question?
All right, yes. And when does the fund transfer happen?
We would do the, you're talking about the general fund transfer?
Yeah.
That could be done once the, if, if the board votes to rescind the resolution. Now, for the $600,000 from FY-19, that would take a capital funds request. And we could bring that, we could bring that in May.
I'm sorry, I should have clarified. When, if they weren't rescinded, when do the funds move?
They just have to be moved by the end, by June 30th. So the $600,000 I have to have, under the current resolution, has to be posted in the fund before June 30th. Now, I have, I'd already did that for this year. I did it in, in November when we actually received our tax revenue. But if that was overturned by the board, that could be returned for this year only.
Okay. And is there a process that KDE has outlined? If you rescind a BG-1, that you can re-adopt that same BG-1? Or do you start all over again?
I believe you start all over again. Now, there are certain things that if the board continued down that same path, like for instance, the survey, the geotech survey, I would, that would not need to be completed again, for instance.
Okay, Danny, are you? And then Allison, this is my second time around. I said I'd go back around once, and I think, do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right. Neither do I, so thank you. And I guess, Mr. Hawkins, I was saying, everybody were, that that took. And I guess, Mr. Hopkins, I was saying, everybody were, that that took care of D, E, and F, or do we need more information on E and F? That was kind of grouped them together.
We good on those, then?
Yeah, I, I think so, if you agree and everyone agrees. Okay, so we're up to item H?
Right, item, I'm sorry, item G.
Oh, I'm sorry, item G. It does come after G.
We do, we do have a couple of new physicians that we are recommending for the 2020, 2021 school year. Both of those are special needs instructional assistants, based on IEPs of students enrolled in those particular classes. And so you'll see one at Northside and one at Woodford County High School. Questions on that? All right.
Okay, go ahead.
Item H is the awarding of the Chromebook bid to Firefly, and Mr. Gibson has coordinated these efforts. We are, this is, we buy two classes per year for Grade 7 and Grade 10, and so this would fulfill that, that requirement, and we would ask for your approval on that. All right, item I, our recommendation, based on the situation that we're facing with our not being in school, is that we would do a waiver of graduation requirements beyond the state minimum. I believe we included a table for you in your information that shows what the state minimum requirements are compared to what our requirements are, so you can see that. And so our recommendation is to go to the state minimum for the 2020 class only, that we would not make any adjustments moving forward. And so we would ask for you to, to approve that.
Are there any questions?
I do have a question on that.
Oh, go ahead.
Where may students be able to find that updated requirement?
If it, if it's approved, Ryan, we, we will, we will post that information and provide it to our guidance counselors, so that people would have access to it. Now, this would not change, like, if, we know we have a number of students who are going to, who are seeking to earn an honors diploma, that would not change that. So if they meet those requirements, they would still get the honors diploma. This is simply in terms of the minimum graduation requirements necessary for this current year.
Okay, thank you.
We may need you, Ryan, to help with that, too, and, yeah, but hopefully, people, it's, Scott, do you think it's going to, it's not going to affect every student, because most students are probably going to be on track to get the 20th, right?
Right, right.
So this, this will be a smaller population.
This would be mainly those who might be struggling on those core classes, which, that would have been a struggle even if we were on the L requirements. So it's, you know, our job will be to try to help them get to, get to the finish line between now and when we finish the year.
So this was kind, this will just kind of avoid everyone having to do a hardship application?
Sure.
They would have been, that would have been available to them in normal times.
Right.
This will just have to, not try to avoid everybody having to do that. Okay. Are there any other questions?
Scott, can we talk?
Mr. Wilson, we'll let him go. Go ahead, Scott.
Mr. Hawkins?
Mm-hmm.
Since the announcement about no more school the rest of the year, I've had several texts asking me about graduation ceremonies, what are the plans for that? And I'm sure that there are other subjects that the board needs to address before the end of the year. When were you planning on advising us what we may or may not need to do regarding this?
Well, the, the main thing, as, as it relates to the board for the end of the year, would be graduation. The, we just found out today that there would be no more in-person instruction for the remainder of the year. The governor was also very clear, when asked about graduation ceremonies, that he's not certain that we would get to the point, even this summer, where we could potentially have an in-person ceremony, because of the, the size restriction in terms of attendees. We are looking at options at this point in time on, if we were to be able to hold a graduation ceremony, where could that occur? When would we be able to do that? There are some unknowns, though, with that right now. But if you look at the Phase 1 and the Phase 2 guidance that has not only come out from the White House, but I think the governor is trying to follow, Phase 2 only allows crowds up to 50. And obviously, a graduation ceremony would be much larger than that. And, and so we would really, I think our goal is to try to have options available that we could do on short notice if restrictions were lifted, and we can certainly bring you some of those in May, because I don't know that we're going to be looking at anything, have to worry about anything in person before then. One thing that is, is being considered right now, and again, we're getting more information because people are reaching out, is, is it possible to do a virtual graduation? And, and that may be an option. We don't really know what those look like, because they've never been done before. And, and so it's trying to get an idea of, if that is something that would be a good thing to do. We already have a graduation date of that Saturday, May 23rd, so if we wanted to do a virtual, then it could potentially be done on that date. But again, still trying to figure out what would be the best option there. Obviously, we could, if we needed to do a special session, maybe the first week of May to talk about options at that point, we could. But again, we're, we're still just trying to, to learn all of the available options that are to us, given that we just found out today that there would not be any in-person instruction for the rest of the year.
Yeah, I, I appreciate, and I understand that completely. This is so new, and, and this is something we've not, never dealt with before. But I do believe, I think what we're saying is, the normal traditional graduation that seniors normally have will not happen this year. But we will work as a board with the superintendent and the high school to do the best we can about, doing the best we can at providing that experience, either virtually, or maybe later in the summer when restrictions are loose. Is that what I understand you to say?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I would just say, we've kind of veered off into this, and it's, it's just a, a natural progression from graduation credits. There's a lot of people that are going to be interested in how we, what we're thinking and how we're proceeding, so I think, it wasn't really listed as an agenda item. We definitely need to get it as an agenda item, so people will be aware that that's what we're talking about, and maybe we can do that in a special session beginning of May, so that those people who are interested in that topic can, you know, make sure that they, they are listening, and.
I agree with you.
Okay.
Real quickly, I just, I just wanted to say something.
Yes, please, Ryan.
Thank you to all the staff that's been working so hard to look for options for us, especially since we don't know what's happening, and I understand that it, it's a different time, and it's a difficult time for all of us. And as a senior, I seriously appreciate the work that the administration's been doing to look at other options for us, and to be creative for our graduation and our other senior send-offs. So thank you, and we also appreciate any updates you get, whenever we can get them. We like hearing those things, and so continuing to do so would be much appreciated by the class.
I, I can assure you, Ryan, if, if there is a way for us to do an in-person graduation, we're going to do an in-person graduation. It's, it's just going to be what we're allowed to do.
I totally understand, too. Thank you so much.
And as always, Ryan, your input is the most important that we'll have, because we, as adults, might think, "Oh, this will be great, this will be..." But you may know, talking to your peers and others, that another alternative might actually be more. So we're definitely keep Ryan involved in this and other students, and we do, I do, we're going to try to make it the best we can for you under these circumstances.
And I do know, I do know that the administration and the counselors at the high school are certainly working to look at all available options for them.
Okay. And then that'll be another, something happened on the agenda. So, okay. Where are we, Scott?
Is there anything else on the graduation requirements? All right. Items J, K, and L, we had gone through on the planning meeting back in March, but we tabled those items, but I'll be happy to go back through them if, if you want for me to do so. But preschool, we had talked about not taking three-year-old tuition students next year, and then also eliminating the PEP program, the wraparound, so that we would have that additional classroom in the afternoon for additional preschool students. And then the other one was, the ETC was an increase in fees. I don't think we've had one for five or six years. And also putting in there that they would do a minimum of three days per week for part-time status. Any questions on any of those?
I don't, it doesn't seem to be any, so.
Item M is the BG5 for the Southside Cafeteria Kitchen Edition, so that's the final closeout document for that project that was completed this past year. Item N is indirect cost for FY21. We have to approve this, and the only one that it affects is if we have MOAs with the Kentucky Department of Education, and we do have one of those right now. So we do need to approve the indirect cost for FY21, and that, that amount is listed in there.
Are there any questions on? I'm seeing shaking heads, so.
Item O, we are asking you to approve a renewal of bids for our property automobile general liability inland marine umbrella insurance, and that would go to Liberty Mutual, who's our current provider. And then we would ask that you approve awarding the bid for workers' comp to Keamy and our cyber insurance to Axis for the FY20, 21 year. Overall, with our insurance bids, it's a net increase of about $27,000. So we had a little reduction in workers' comp, but a slight increase in the others. Any questions on that? Pardon?
Do we bid those every year?
No, we typically can do up to three years, isn't that right, Amy? On a renewal, on our insurance?
Yes, and we actually, on the Keamy and the cyber insurance, we did solicit other quotes, and the two current vendors that we are using came in under, and, and there's not a lot of competition in the insurance world.
Right. First of all.
Correct.
Okay.
And then my valuation, and that concludes the regular agenda.
Okay, we have several items listed as old business. These were items that were on the March agenda, but because we were new to virtual and all that, we, you know, made that meeting as efficient and as short as possible. So I think most of these were Ms. Springgate's agenda items, and so Ms. Springgate, I don't know if you want to keep those on old business, or try to get them on the agenda next week. So if you could just kind of go through these with us a little bit and tell us what you would like. The first one was authorize district staff to seek, oh, no, wait, actually, this was Ms. Bradley, I believe. Authorize district staff to seek appraisal of district-owned property between Southside and Hunter Town.
I would ask, could that be moved to an action item for next week?
Okay. And are you, I guess there's no, any documentation you anticipate that we should look forward with that? Okay. The next one was SWOT analysis for all high school funding options. Ms. Springgate, I believe that was your request?
That was my request. I think probably that one does not need to be moved as an action item until we, we figure out if we're going to unrestrict. If we unrestrict the funds and return them to the general fund, then I think that one, item C, and item D, and E could all just, just be on hold. So if we could just leave that one temporarily?
Okay, item B was the SWOT analysis. So you're saying B, C, and D, or C, D, and E, or all four of them?
I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. The SWOT analysis for all high school funding options may be a moot point if we unrestrict the funds and return them back to the general fund. Item C, develop the written plan for all high school funding options, again, may be a moot point if we return the funds back to the general fund. Item D, set the next forum day. And item E, creation of a lead team to research and provide recommendations for high school funding options. If all of those could just be left on table until we, we figure out what we're going to be doing, if we're going to be unrestricting the funds, that might take care of some of those discussions.
I think then, Mr. Hawkins, what we can do, Ms. Springgate, is just leave those on old business, so they don't disappear from our mind, but they will not be on as any kind of action item for next week.
That sounds fine.
Okay. All right. That brings us to discussion items. I thought we had, I'm just, am I looking at the wrong thing here? Oh, no, that's on the regular. I'm sorry, let me find my sheet. Scott, help me out, what were, I don't.
The first one, the first one was the email request from Mr. Locke. That was the first discussion item.
Okay. Ms. Springgate, that was yours?
Yes, I asked that the email that Mr. Locke sent on 4/20 to you and to Danny, asking for guidance and then payment, that that be placed on the agenda as a discussion item? I just had a couple of questions about that. Number one, if Mr. Locke was seeking board direction, why wasn't the email sent to the full board?
Um, I did forward that to you after your request, and I will be more timely in forwarding those before. Obviously, the board is not going to give direction without, you know, a meeting, so.
I believe that we.
Go ahead, Danny.
That emailing more than two board members is an open meetings violation if they're asking for input. Is that correct, Mr. Hawkins?
If, if it was a general request for direction, not via email, I don't know that sending an email to the full board is necessarily an open meetings violation. Again, I think it was the, if I understand Ms. Springgate's question is, if the information was to seek direction, her question was, why wasn't it sent to the full board? I don't think sending something to the full board necessarily is an open meetings. It's, if discussion ensues from that, that can be an open meetings violation. But I don't think just the general request or the generals to say, "I need some..." I need some direction here so that the full board is aware uh that that needs to be done, so.
Well, I think uh, Ms. Springgate, everybody has it now, I will be more intent on that. I will question if I did an email like that, uh, I would clearly clear it to make sure it's not an open meetings violation with a lawyer and send them in the future.
I appreciate that, I just think it's really important that all board members have all information. Um, my second question, is, do you want to respond to Mr. Locke's email? And if yes, could you please share your response?
I did not.
I did not, and I think it's also important to note that that was also sent to Mr. Hawkins and Ms. Smith at that time.
I believe we were copied on it.
Okay.
And I would just think that it probably is not a good business practice to, to fail to respond to um really anyone. Um, that was sent over 18 days ago, um, and so I think that probably that's just something that could be cleared up, that we, you know, all agree that all communication should be shared with all board members, and that um, you know, hopefully we won't have an issue in the future.
Uh, and I agree, and we'll be good about that, I know in the past, board members have made trips and gotten information that I knew nothing about. So I will be sensitive to that, and those will be coming your way. Um, then the next discussion item was, I found my sheet, uh, public comments.
Yes, I asked that that be put on because it just seems like more than likely we're going to be having virtual meetings for the next couple of months. And I feel like it's important that we establish a protocol for how we will engage the public and have public comment at our regular board meetings. I just wanted to see if Mr. Hawkins had any ideas about how other boards are handling this or any suggestions so that we can get back into the practice of inviting our public to comment and um taking that input.
Uh, the only thing that I've heard from a couple of colleagues is that they have done, um, folks have emailed in those public comments, and then those are read during that uh time on the agenda. Um, that can certainly be done if we set up a window of time where the public comments have to be emailed. They could be emailed, for example, maybe to Angel, um, and then we could um have someone here who is um here at the board office while we're conducting the meeting. We could have somebody else read those uh during that time. So that is one option that at least has been shared with me from a couple of colleagues.
I did talk to the Chinawas about this, they just think that it's problematic. The only um uh kind of scenario that they shared with me was Fayette County did do what Mr. Hawkins just described, where you could send in during the meeting time, and I, I think, you know, Scott and I talked a little bit about it, like, it would have to be like a window during the meeting time that would end, you know, if we advertised it, we'd have to end it, estimate when it would be time for public comment, and end it before that, but it, you know, the, the emails would have to come in during the meeting time. The other problem is if we get 100 emails, um, you know, we're, we we just can't read them all, and, and, you know, we didn't have any kind of uh efficient meetings, so. Um, that is the only school board I've heard that's doing this, the only one that Chinawas had heard. He did not know that this was a necessity to continue, but of course, we have our own community to consider. Uh, so he was only aware of Fayette County doing that.
Well, I would just ask that, Mr. Hawkins, if you could, um, just put something together um that kind of follows those guidelines, um, so that we can have this moved for, uh, to the regular agenda for a vote um next week. That would be my preference, so that we can go ahead and establish a protocol and move forward with that.
So you're considering, you want to vote on what the protocol would be next week, not necessarily have public comment next week?
No, my, my preference would be to have a protocol that says, this is how we would engage public comment during regular board meetings. We would have them send emails, you could do uh like you suggested, possibly having a um uh, a time that they would send those in, and then those would be read during the public comment section of the agenda. So what I'm suggesting is that we actually have a uh, an ability for the public to be able to comment at regular meetings. Um, and that uh, that would be something that could be on our agenda for a vote. So um, uh, I'm comfortable with Mr. Hawkins um looking into how Fayette County is doing it and, and having us do something similar, and I'm also comfortable with if he feels like we need to have a, a time limit or a uh, emails must be received by a certain time, I'm comfortable with that, I'm comfortable with uh, you know, whatever we need to do to make sure that we can have public comment once again. And the public may not wish to comment, but I feel like they should certainly have that opportunity.
Of course, and uh, so, but I'm just, I'm sorry, let me just be clear. You want on the agenda next week to vote on whether we're gonna have public comment going forward?
To vote how we will have public comment.
Oh, and to how we're gonna do it, okay. But, and then anticipating that if we vote on a protocol, we vote to have public comment, it will happen at the next meeting?
That would be fine, yes, that's, that's clear.
In May? Okay, okay. So that will be an action item, Mr. Hawkins, for next week? Uh, I, any other board members have comments on this?
I would just say, if Mr. Hawkins can come with the protocol, and we would have time to send it to Chinawas Law Office for them to, to review and make sure that we're okay.
Um, Mr. Hawkins, can you come up with something when you can work with me, or you could work with Ms. Springgate, to come up with what the suggestion would be, other, and I think that if we could get that out this week, because I think other board members might have comments on it, they may see issues that, you know, like, I might not see an issue with a protocol that somebody else would, you know? This is kind of, again, uncharted with us with the virtual, so that would help us um have a time to review it before next week.
It's, it's very, um, I wouldn't really see the need for incurring any expenses with the Chinawas Law Firm as they represent Fayette County, who is in fact doing uh a very similar thing, which would be what I'm asking Mr. Hawkins to, to bring to us. Um, so I feel like that there's really no need to um contact the attorney to incur a cost or an expense whenever it's a, a district that he also represents and that they are doing it in this manner. I feel like that would be a consistent thing, so that wouldn't necessarily involve the attorneys just so that we could have public comment.
Well, um, we wanna be careful so that we don't have expenses after that, so. Um, but let's get that on the agenda item next week. Um, was that the last discussion item? Do we, was that all from everybody sharing, Mr. Hawkins?
There, I, I think there was one other item, but I, I, I just wanna make sure I'm clear on what my direction is. You want me to put together a protocol to send it to you and Sheri and get your feedback?
Or if you guys wanna, you know, or you wanna just work with me and we can send something out. I just think we need to get something out so people can think about it. Um, you know, like, what might some of the tweaks, or if they have ideas that might make it flow a little smoother? Because we do, if we do have public comment, and, and that's always the best thing, we need it to be a, in this virtual manner, you know, it, it, it needs to to be organized and, and we need to be very sure of what we're doing, and everybody be on the same page, so. Okay, so Scott, if you wanna call me and talk about it, or, and then we can uh see if this is what Sheri was intending. Okay, if that's okay with everybody? I'm not hearing any no's, so.
I'll call you, and I'll put something together and send it to you and Sheri, how about that?
That sounds great.
Okay.
Hey, when were you requesting that he has that to you?
Uh, Scott, when can you get that to me?
I mean, if it's what we discussed tonight, I can get that to you tomorrow. Yeah, it's no problem.
Yeah, and, and I know you've had some thought about it, so let's just do that because it'll just kind of be a, a first idea.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Did you, did you hear that, Ms. Richardson? He was hoping to get that to me tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and you're right, we do have a very important uh item C, update on school operations. I know there's a lot of updates, and so I thought Mr. Hawkins could just share this all at one time and give us the opportunity to hear it together and, and ask any questions, so, Mr. Hawkins?
Thank you. Um, obviously, we found out earlier today that Governor Beshear has recommended that all schools be closed for the remainder of this current school year. Um, given that, um, Commissioner Brown then talked about that all districts would still be required to meet the 1,062 instructional hours. That's a current um requirement, 1,062 instructional hours, and a minimum of 170 instructional days. However, Senate Bill 177 waived the 170-day minimum requirement. So we are only bound this year by the 1,062 instructional hours. Um, he also, uh, a commissioner also let us know that every NTI day will be counted as a seven-hour instructional day. Um, in the past, um, each district would be a little bit different. It, with, whichever school has the shortest instructional day, that is what your NTI day would count. Um, and I think ours is around six hours and 20 minutes, or six hours and 25 minutes. So now, we're gonna be able to, to count each NTI day as a seven-hour instructional day. So what that means is, um, we're gonna be doing some calculations and also talking with our administrators uh tomorrow um about um what we wanna do for that first week of May. Um, and so then that would determine when that last school day would be. Um, more than likely, it's gonna be during that second week of May, sometime that, uh, during the week of May 11th through 15th is when our last uh instructional day would be for this current year. Um, with that being said, we'll be working with all of our staff members on a variety of options uh in meeting their full number of contracted days. Um, uh, we're gonna be able to offer some professional development, also some training options uh that they could go ahead and take advantage of, uh, that would actually be for the next school year. Uh, but we will be, uh, again, developing all of those options so that all staff members would be able to fulfill their contracted days. Um, the Monday meal program has been extremely successful. Um, today, we served 1,372 meal bags, uh, that's over 19,200 meals. Um, so our average over the three weeks that we've been doing the Monday program is about 17,700 meals, uh, which I think is just fantastic. And a big shout out to Courtney Choir and all of our food service staff for the job that they've done in continuing to provide those meals to our students and families. Um, you know, I've always admired our staff for the work that they do for our kids, but over the past uh five weeks, my admiration has gone to a completely new level. Uh, from completely transforming our instructional program to offering meals, to reaching out to students in a wide variety of ways, our staff has done a phenomenal job in meeting the needs of our students and families. And so I, I just can't thank our folks enough for all that they've done during um this certainly unusual time. Uh, our counselors and social workers are contacting students and families to check in. Uh, actually, I saw again today, uh, we do a, a Mental Health Monday where our counselors have been um offering, uh, been doing videos to offer some suggestions and ideas on things that can help from a mental health standpoint for any student or family member that may be struggling. Uh, so I think that's been a, a really nice thing that we've been able to do. Uh, as we talked about a little earlier, uh, with school being out for the remainder of the year, uh, we're gonna look at all options uh for graduation and other, other end-of-year activities. Um, in-person events, though, may not be possible, uh, even later this summer. And it will be dependent on what restrictions are still in place, particularly the size limitations as it relates to gatherings. Uh, and then finally, uh, we are putting together a task force to look at what supports will need to be in place for the beginning of next school year. Um, with no more in-person instruction, our students will not have been in the classroom for five months if we are able to start school along time as scheduled next year. Um, this will bring a whole new set of challenges, and uh we must do our best to prepare for those. So I think Ryan mentioned this earlier, but the beginning of next school year will be unlike any that we've ever had before. Um, and it won't be a quick uh adjustment. Uh, this is something that, uh, we may have to have things in place for several months uh to be able to uh uh help overcome some of the learning gaps that our students are certainly going to experience, uh, to deal with mental health issues that maybe our students are experiencing, uh, and also behavior issues that students may experience as well as they return to the classroom. So, um, those are certainly gonna be some challenges, but I think we'll be up to it. Um, and we'll certainly uh do our best uh to, to make the beginning of next school year the best one that we've ever had, so. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Hawkins, you said that they've eliminated the minimum of 170 days and um, and only requiring 1,062 instructional hours. Just so everybody can better understand, what were the, what were the amount of days that we were going to have this year and the number of instructional hours we were gonna have this year?
Our school calendar is 175 days. I don't, off the top of my head, know the hours, but it's, it's more than 1,062. So, so we exceed those minimums each year.
The uh, the meals, I'm, I'm not a math major, how many children have we served? How many students, do you know?
Off the top of my head, no. Um, I, I can tell you that each one of those meal bags is for a child. So, um, we may have done some adult meals, um, but by and large, those meals are for students. And so each meal bag provides 14 meals for a student, um, and, and it doesn't necessarily have to be one of our students. Uh, it could be any child, uh, birth to age 19 in our community.
That's a, that's a perfect segue. You've done, I think you've done an admirable job, you and your staff, in, in trying to meet the, uh, the food needs of our, of our children during this uh NTI days. I think you've announced that early May there'll be no more school. What are our plans, or do we have plans for meeting the needs of this children during, these children during the summer?
Actually, I talked to Courtney about that today. Uh, we normally run a summer feeding program at multiple sites throughout the summer. However, I don't know what that, what sites will be available. Uh, we, we serve at Vacation Bible Schools, we serve at the Sunshine Camp at Falling Springs, uh, we go to places in the community to serve meals. Um, so without knowing what those details will be for the summer, I can't give you definite plans. But, um, we also did talk about, we may continue the Monday meal program through the month of June, uh, if we are allowed to. Um, uh, again, the, I, I think the Department of Agriculture would probably have to give us some permissions on that. Uh, but uh, our goal will be to continue to serve meals uh throughout the summer, uh, whether that looks like our traditional summer feeding program or whether uh it looks similar to what we're doing now.
Is, uh, is that one of those things, a madam chairperson, that we can put on the agenda for our May meeting to be sure that it gets uh solidified and so that we can get the information out?
Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Uh, Mr. Walker, let him continue, go ahead, Mr. Walker.
Hawkins, I wanted to, to share with you my admiration, my admiration for our administrators and our staff, uh, our food workers, um, IAs who are in there helping teachers print and copy, um, they have all stepped up to the plate in this, and I'm, I will be forever grateful. But I also would be remiss if I did not thank the parents and the grandparents and the guardians who have been through absolute heck trying to maintain the educational needs of their children and grandchildren and, and nieces and nephews. Uh, it's just unbelievable, I've heard so many stor, stories from parents about how difficult this has been for them, but they all assure me they're giving 100%. So I think a, a public thank you and a public pat on the back ought to be given for those folks too, because uh. because everybody that's, everybody's involved in this, trying to educate our students. So I just wanted to publicly thank that group of folks also.
Ms. Bradley? Did you have something, Ms. Bradley?
No, I was just going to echo Mr. Hawkins' thanks to Courtney Choir and to our food service. I mean, that's incredible. And I know that lots of people in the community have commented on how welcome that has been and specifically reached out to commend Mr. Hawkins and the school system for all of their work on this.
Ms. Bringate, did you have anything?
No, I would just say that I'm so grateful to live in Woodford County. I think we're so blessed in so many ways. And, Mr. Hawkins, I think the schools have done a wonderful job. I think you have done a wonderful job during this pandemic to really be flexible and to meet any and all needs that you've found. And I really do appreciate that. I think our parents appreciate that. I know our students appreciate it. And I just want to say a big thank you to you and your staff. And really, I just, it's, you know, it's wonderful to be part of a community that can still provide that amount of excellence and be looking forward and, you know, still working on all the things that we need to work on to make sure that next year we'll be able to meet those needs. I think that's wonderful. Thank you.
Ms. Richardson, did you have any questions or any comments for Mr. Hawkins?
No, ma'am. Good, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Alvey?
Let me just say one other thing to Mr. Wilson's point. And that was one of the things that, when we looked at the four-day week, was trying to keep our parents in mind to give them a little bit of a break midweek. And I will say, I think probably teachers and staff are more greatly appreciated now for the work that they do based on what folks are having to do on a daily basis. To think that our teachers manage a classroom full of kids and do such a great job on a daily basis. So I think if nothing else, this has hopefully lifted up our profession a little bit more. And that's never a bad thing.
Okay, Mr. Alvey, do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Hawkins or any of us?
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who has made the best out of a difficult situation. It's definitely been hard for our students and our staff and everyone involved. And we're just, I'm just very thankful for everything that's been going on to make sure that we do the best we can. And I'm really proud to say I'm a Woodford County student.
Oh, we're proud of you too, so. Well, of course, I have a question. The task force that you're putting together, you said was going to be how to catch up. Now, we're getting money, federal money, right, from CARES, the CARES Act?
We should be, we should be receiving, if it comes out the way that it's been shared up to this point, maybe close to half a million dollars.
Okay. And do we have the criteria? I know it has to be used for COVID-related expenses. Is there any, are they still developing the criteria? Is it going to get more specific or?
There will be some, there will be some more specifics, although I do believe that we're going to have quite a bit of flexibility. There is no doubt that things that we need to do at the beginning of next school year would be very much related to COVID-19. However, I just think we have to be very much aware that it's going to take more than $500,000 to do what we need to do to help our kids as we return to school next year. And so that's something that Amy and I have discussed about putting some money in the budget to be able to go with that $500,000. But anytime you start talking about remediation, when you start talking about ways that we can, to help our students recover some things that may have been lost, I mean, again, you go back to the fact that it will be five months that they will have been out of school. And while we are doing, I think, some great things from an NTI perspective, it doesn't replace the direct instruction being in the classroom. And so I think we just have to be prepared that that's going to be a reality for us as we start next school year.
So the task force, will they be, I guess my understanding when I first heard about it was they're going to be involved in how to use the CARES money? Is that correct?
Their, their task will be to develop what they believe we need to have in place as a school district to help our students when they return to school. At that point, when we look at their recommendations, then we will begin to cost that out to see, can we apply the CARES money to a lot of that? I hope we will be able to. We also have to keep in mind that the CARES money needs to be utilized for any expenses that we've incurred this year. You know, we sent out quite a few Chromebooks. If those need to be replaced, that CARES money could be utilized for that. If we add any other expenses during the course of this spring that we didn't anticipate, extra paper cost, extra copier cost because of NTI work, we can use CARES money for that. So there will be some expenses that we incurred this year, but our goal is to utilize a big chunk of that money for how do we help our students transition back next year and get them back to where they need to be.
So you have set the goal for the money and the task force is just going to help develop the best way to achieve that goal, which is the remediation at the beginning of the year?
I think it's to do our best to help our students transition back smoothly and get back to where they, where we need them to be.
Who's on the task force? What, you don't have to give me names if you don't want to, but just like, what's the makeup? Is it all staff?
We have, we have teachers from all three levels. We have administrators from all three levels, some central office staff. We have a couple of parents. We have a special education teacher, an English as second language teacher. So we're trying to, again, look at it from all, from all aspects.
Okay. Because I would agree with, our staff, obviously, you know, this, it's like you try to prepare for everything, but there's no way in a pandemic, my goodness. But, but our parents too have really, I think, learned in our, as always, a wonderful resource on the best thing, having experienced this firsthand with their kids at home, things that work and that don't work. So I'm glad there's some parents on there that can help guide this because they have had a, you know, they've been in the trenches here with everyone else, so. But thank you. Thank you for your update. Do you have anything else?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Hawkins? Okay. I think that's the end of our agenda, unless I'm missing something. We have some information items that we all have. Do we have a reason to go into executive session?
No.
Debbie, could I add one more thing?
Okay, go ahead.
Earlier, I'm sorry. I just wanted to mention that I've had several community leaders reach out and they would really like to be involved in celebrating our seniors this year. And I have asked them to get in contact with you, Scott, to maybe work out something they could do. I know that Judge Executive K said that the county would love to be a part of that and Mayor Froggit as well. And Mayor Vandermark actually was wondering how many seniors there are in Midway. And I've directed them all to get in touch with you so that maybe we can do something special to celebrate them. I know there's a number of ideas that you guys are looking at, but I did want to relay that.
Sure.
And it's very nice that they're also eager to celebrate all of the kids here in Woodford County.
That's great.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes, sir?
Alui, adjourn.
Stephanie? Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Wilson and a second by Ms. Bradley to adjourn. Ms. Bradley? Guys, are there any discussions? Ms. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Richardson?
Aye.
Ms. Bringate?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, we will adjourn with a vote of five to nothing. Thank you all so much. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bob Gibson, for all your help.
You're welcome.